Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter bi-weekly report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
I'm going to open the zoning board of adjustments meeting for February 18th, 2025. I am Chair Esther Olson Murphy. Today, we have full member Kevin Baum to my immediate right. Next to him is Mark Emmes. My awful lot names. To my left is Laura Montagno, alternate member. It's only been like the fifth time I've done it. So tonight, there's four members. We have a quorum. You guys are okay with there only being four of us instead of the regular five, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Then we'll all be voting. So for tonight's meeting, we are going to hear the application of Jake Kaylee Associates for variance from Article 5, Section 5.1.2 in Article 4, Section 4.42, demolish an existing structure and rebuild in the same footprint, seeking relief from the required minimums, yard, side yard setbacks, and a special exception for Article 4, Section 4.4, Schedule 3, Dimension, Density and Dimension Regulation Non-Residential Note 12 to permit the proposed construction of a structure 50 feet in height. The subject property is located at 97 Portsmouth Ave in the C2 Highway Commercial Zoning District, Tax map parcel 65-125, EPA case 24-11. Ooh. It's a long one. We'll let you start your presentation.
Great. Thank you. It is an intimate room, so I'll avoid us too loudly. And I have to ask the guests to forgive me. My voice is very, I've been sick for about a month and a half. I'm not contagious. I just have a residual frog in my throat, so I apologize. My voice is a little shattered. So I'm Josh Lenz, a lieutenant of Boot Town 3B. Our address for the record is 601 Central Avenue, Dover. I'm here representing G. Kelly Associates in relation to both a special exception to permit a 50-foot building and also a variance to permit a non-conforming setback. I have a PowerPoint presentation for you this evening. Sorry if you guys kind of look over your shoulder and there are larger plans on there, questions. I'll go through this really quickly. This is a pretty simple ask, I think. And if it's okay with the board, I'd like to present the property as one, just so we don't have to go through it twice. And then I can address the criteria for special exception variance separately, or we can just take them at face value as we've written them in our application. It's your purview, but if that's okay, I'll just.
If you get presented everything, we'll go through it twice.
Sure.
Or on a session, you can present it all at once.
So I'll take you through a couple of overhead photos, a couple of street view photos, and then I'll put the plans up. And the plans that you have in your packet are both site plan. Oh, I'm sorry. We've got basically basic site plan, and then we have a variance plan. The variance plan is the one that we should really reference tonight, but I put in the existing conditions plan just that you have all the dimensions, kind of everything that's going on, because there are cross easements for parking and ingress egress on this property. And that references a number of abutting properties. I think, off the top of my head, it's lots 126, 125, and 124. All have cross easements to park on the margaritas lot. So I'll take you through this quickly, and then we can go through the special exception criteria. All right, so all the images you see tonight were taken today from Google, so they are the most current images that I can get from the internet. This is just from Google Earth. Big R and arrows pointing at the property. I think one thing to note throughout our discussion tonight is that this property is extremely narrow. It's actually under 50 feet wide. I think it's about 344, give or take. One side might be 10 feet longer, so there's a parallelogram. But it's an extremely narrow lot of record. And on this property, there is a one-story building with a dry cleaning business in there now. Probably all drive past it every day. This image is from the tax map, obviously, map 65. And we're dealing with lot 125. And you can see how, in fact, narrow this lot is. And I think this is just a good kind of overview of all the lots in the area. Many of these lots are very large that are near this lot. So this lot is kind of uniquely small, if you will. This is just the same map zoomed in, so you can get a better feel for the actual lot. Now, the existing structure on each side is, I think, one side might be 4.7, the other side's 4.8. So it's really right up on the lot lines as far as side setbacks. And this is relevant really only for the variance, but since I'm talking about it, it would be impossible to use this lot if the ordinance as drafted now in 2025 was applied to this lot. Again, it's a lot of record, but to put the current side setback parameters onto this lot would render it unbuildable. All right, so dropping down with the little guy on Google that we can drop down. This is just straight street view of the existing dry cleaning business. You can see, I think it's McLean Manor to the left of there. You've got Bank Prov, and then Margaritas to the right. And it's kind of good to see here, and you can see this on the existing conditions plan, the ingress egress for Bank Prov and this whole lot. You can see in and out there, and they share that. Okay, this is looking, we're going to look at both directions, up and down, 108. And this is really just to show that there is just loads of safe site distance here for DOT. None of the ingress or egress is going to change as far as curb cut as proposed. All right, so this is the variance plan. I think this is probably the one that I'll leave up, just so if anyone has any questions. I do have both pages of the existing conditions plan available here. Anyone have some questions? And again, sorry Christian can't be here tonight. So this is the variance sketch plan and shows the proposed structure. Now, as proposed, the applicant would like to raise the existing structure and rebuild in the exact footprint, which I think is 40 by 80. Or 44 by 80. So the footprint won't change, the side setbacks won't change, rear and front setbacks won't change. There's a little bit of different surfacing there. That's not critical for tonight's review. And then the applicant's also asking to push the building to 50 feet, so.
Do you know the current, sorry to interrupt.
No, yeah, please do.
Do you know the current height of the building?
I don't know the exact height of the building. Do you guys know the height of the existing building as it is known?
It's only 16 to 18.
Yeah, I was gonna say it's a one-story, and we scrolled back. I mean, if I had to guess, yeah, judging that it's splitting the distance on the Bank Prov building, yeah, it's probably 18 feet-ish. Ah, either cars. Right. Sorry, Kevin, I didn't have that answer. So this is probably where the presentation can diverge, from start variance and then move to special exception, if you'd like me to do the other way, Ken.
Sure, I have a couple of questions to go through. Probably do it now.
Sure.
Which I think he answered the one, which is it's a big wide open driveline. You are not proposing to change the curb cut or the driveway.
No, no change whatsoever.
And it's, you had mentioned it, but again, the plans are kind of small, so it's hard to see. But there's, I assume there is existing cross easements for the access to the rear of the lot.
There are, and they are difficult to see. I can't zoom in because of the way that the setup is here. But they're, yeah, they cross on the back of the lot. There's a 20-foot cross easement back there.
It looks like they go around the bank, the far side of the bank, behind the bank.
Exactly right. And that's, I just wanted to read this. Exactly right.
Strictly followed, I'm sure.
Right, yeah. None of that's changing. It's relatively open back there. And all of that will likely be addressed, including the curb cut. I'm sure DOT will, might issue another construction permit for this, and site plan review will kind of address all of that.
My guess is that may change, but that isn't really relevant here. And then just, again, the, it looks like you're putting in, and this is more planning, but I'm just curious, it looks like there's a note for pervious pavers?
Yes.
Is that just the walkway, or are all those pavers?
It's all of the pavers, I believe.
So it is a completely impervious lot right now, so that's.
And they're going to have to do, it has no drainage or stormwater plan whatsoever now. And so its site plan, it's likely that that will be addressed. Also regarding, and again, it's outside the bounds of tonight, but just if you're curious, ingress egress, it's very likely that they'll have to do, or if not 100%, that they'll have to do a traffic study for this too. So all those items will get addressed at site plan review.
And then I guess I will tee it up just as you go through it, and people may have other questions too. But I mean, just to be transparent, I think my biggest concern with this is, if you could go back to the, to the Google Street View, it's obviously, you know, we're, you're looking to push up to three stories. It is allowed by special exception, but you're fully in the setbacks.
Right.
And so if you can address as you go through, I mean, I just, again, that seems like it's going to put it roughly at the same, you know, about the same height as the McLean Manor next to it, which is much lower. And then I'm not sure how, much higher than the Bank Prov building is, but if you can address that. Because I just, again, that's some of my concern with this is it's, it's just the scale of it compared to everything else, because it is really filling the whole width of that, of that lot. And, you know, with setback relief, we're worried about, worried about shading, you know, things like that. And so just if you can speak to that with everything else too. Then I don't need to dominate all the time.
There's more questions, so we're right here.
Do you guys want to jump into the criteria, or do you have other questions for that?
I think I have a couple more questions. Much easier to understand while you go through the criteria if we have the background. You're putting a micro hotel here?
Yes.
I noticed on some of the drawings, it said 17 condos or townhouses in the text on the actual plan you sent us. I just want to make sure.
That might be a type of micro hotel, is the.
It makes shoes between that and commercial.
How many rooms would it have?
Right now, I think we ended up, Sean's here. Sean, we ended up 21, or did it get backed down to 18?
That was 18.
18.
18 rooms. So my question's going to be in terms of parking, because you need a spot per room plus a spot for every employee at max employed people there. So on this lot, looking, the plan said this was showing proposed parking. I didn't see any, there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 7 parking spaces.
Right.
And it also says something about the snow storage, where it would be, and there's no indication of snow storage on here either.
Do you have any idea about snow? So I guess.
My big thing is, I'm more, parking right now is my bigger concern than the snow storage.
Happy to answer both of those. I do think that'll be a site, a planning board.
It is.
But I'm happy to answer them, just in good faith. So there is a parking easement for this property with margaritas. That's noted on the existing conditions plan. Do you have a parking plan already kind of outlined roughly, or?
We had one that Sean had kind of put together from an architectural perspective. I don't know, I don't have that.
Yeah, I think that we.
I don't have it on that.
Do you have a general plan though? Because that.
We would, we would like seeing what it's going to look like.
That would be really helpful. And I understand that things may.
Change.
Change.
Yeah, that's, so that's why I didn't submit them, because, you know, kind of more planning zoning. But you want to roll that out?
Yeah, I think here it does, because of the potential vault, because of the, you know, the vault in the setbacks.
Yeah, that's what the narrative Sean had put together.
So this would be the bank?
Yeah, the bank's right here.
Yeah.
And then this is McLean Manor, but that's not, you know.
It's a lot taller than that.
So we're just trying to get an idea, and you can kind of see, you know, we're trying to mix up the architecture a little bit to make it an attractive building there.
But it looks like, so it looks like it's three stories plus a penthouse.
Yep, this is a rooftop.
Okay.
Yep. This is not, I think, I think we ended up at 48 feet or something like that.
48 and above.
Yes.
And do you know how tall the buildings are next door to it? Like how many feet those are?
What would you say, McLean Manor? That's probably about almost 50 feet, that's related to McLean Manor, right, to the ridge?
It's a four-story, including that walkout ground level. So if you were to factor in, like each story would usually be framed at between 12 and 15 feet. It's probably at least 50 feet, if not 60, by the time you frame, I mean, I don't know why that was built, but if I had to guess, that's probably where it is.
So it's probably at this point nonconforming as well, as far as height is concerned.
Yeah, and I think the thing about, I was going to kind of, as I address the criteria, so talking specifically about special exception, right, for height. When you drive up and down 108, there are a lot of structures that are pretty tall. It's not like, if you take the entire neighborhood in totality and zone, there are plenty of structures that are 50 feet or higher. I mean, I didn't map the whole thing, but when you just quickly drive by, you can see that there's a number of three- to four-story buildings throughout.
Including the hospital. I mean, there's.
Hotels.
Yeah, so there's quite a lot of height that is pre-existing on this particular street. So from an aesthetic viewpoint, I get the idea of talking about, you know, weight and where that's being placed on the lot. But here, from a shading perspective, we're not really worried about that. There's no, you're not going to shade any of the residences at McLean Manor with the extra height. One, they're at the same height. And two, because it's that L-shaped lot where there's parking, none of the actual windows are really going to be even remotely affected by a new building. And then you have a bank on the other side and parking lots, so it's really not a concern. And there's no landscaping even, or a buffer between any of these, it's just all paved. So I don't think that shading really would be an issue here. If there was a, you know, a single-family cape next to it or something, then yeah, that would be a big difference. But here, it really is conforming with the timbre of the neighborhood and the aesthetic that surrounds it. And I think arguably would greatly improve the aesthetic here. You'd have kind of two new buildings right next to each other, the bank and this. The reason I didn't submit the architectures, usually I don't submit those for zoning only, but in this case, maybe, point taken, maybe I should have just given that we're talking about height, just to give you a little reference. But the floor structure and the height of this could change, you know, once it goes to planning. But we're just trying to get to that 50-foot limit within the zone.
I think it helps us, because especially like in situations like this, 50 feet, if that's 16 feet, all right, it's, we have to in our mind go, okay, 16, so three of those buildings stacked on top of each other.
Sure.
How's that going to look actually? Is it going to be, oh, it's, yeah, it reaches the same height as the peaked roof of the neighbors? Unless it's not going to change really extensively. Or is it deceptive, because this is a wide-angle camera, realistically, it's going to be like two stories above McLean Manor, because that's set down into a gully? And so like, that's kind of where I think a little bit of the reticence comes from, is that we don't know. I don't want to tell you like, yeah, you can do 50 feet, and then there's a five-story building of 10-foot each story rooms going in next door to a place that's only, you know, 20 feet off the wall.
Totally understand. And I think that the grading on this particular lot, so the wide-angle lens isn't, not meant to be, that's just what was offered.
No, 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 yeah, it's cool. I'm not saying you're trying to do this.
And I do think that it would likely, you know, it's not, this is not, you know, normally we would do like a balloon test or something for something like this, but I do think it's going to be, just, I've been doing this for about 20 years, and I was a builder before I was an attorney. I do think it's probably going to fall somewhere in line with McLean Manor, even with the additional grade of, it looks to me that it's, that the dry cleaner is slightly uphill from the parking lot of McLean.
It's definitely uphill.
So, you know, I think it's going to be somewhat proportionate to that. But I think arguably it's proportionate to the rest of the street and the neighborhood. And I think that that's the real criteria to look at. And also, and maybe this might be a good juncture. Are there any more questions about that? Because I think that the criteria, maybe might, the arguments with those might help with this a little bit too.
Yeah, just confirming that the, because I think this was in the application, that it is going to be in the same existing footprint?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. So which, you'll front and back, I assume, too? Or is it just a side back? Okay, so the building will ultimately be pretty significantly set back from parts of that, I would expect.
Yes, it's significantly set back.
That's all I have.
We've hijacked.
No, it's okay. I welcome the questions. No, that's great.
Hot bench.
So yeah, so why don't we just quickly, so I submitted this special exception criteria. Usually I prefer to let those stand and then just answer questions. But I think here, looking at them in totality, I think based on your questions, the use is permitted. So the height is permitted in the zone. And talking about the special exception, it's, if the other thing with the criteria is, you know, it's a must grant, it's not a major, it's quite different than a variance analysis. Here, we, you know, in the C2 zone, it permits 50 feet by special exception. And respectfully, I think the important thing to note about that is that the city has thought about this in their zoning regs, and have said that 50 feet is appropriate in this particular zone, but they want a little bit of height scrutiny, to Kevin's kind of point about shading in this location for that sort of height, which is why we're here. I do think the use promotes generally, you know, we see the help, safety, general law for language in all of the ordinances and precautions in the preamble. I think it's well-supported here to upgrade this building. I think it's a, modernizing this location, having a modern building is always safer almost, and arguably healthier, better air quality, stuff like that. So I do think that it meets that criteria. It's clearly a use that's compatible with the zone, you know, a micro hotel, because of the other hotels, you have residential, residential use directly next to it. You have commercial uses directly next to it. So it's clearly in line with the timbre of the zone as intended. As far as adequate landscaping and screening, this will go to site plan review. The applicant's very willing to work with the town to sort out both landscaping and screening. I'm not sure how, Kevin, I think your point is well-taken, that, you know, DOT will take a look at this. Ingress egress may or may not change. And with that, if screening or landscaping can be added, we'll certainly do that. I do think that it's parking and egress compatible. It does have a permit in and out, and we've got, as this was all designed, we've got the right-of-way and then the parking in the margaritas lot. So there is, I think, Christian, again, he's not here today, but they have looked at this, and they did the calculation that it is possible to accommodate parking based on that easement and based on the existing property. And that's, you know, for this lot being so small, it's, that's the only way really that you would be able to accommodate any sort of parking based on the current ordinance. And then, you know, as far as property value, looking at CMAs or comparable properties, there's a general rule that when a property is improved substantially, such as this would be, the value will at least remain the same, but more likely than not, the value will go up for this particular property, which then, as everyone knows probably from, you know, financing houses, it brings all of the property values that are similar up with it. The explosives, not applicable, and then the techs, they're not applicable. So that's just a quick kind of run-through of the criteria. But I think really the thing that I want to point out just one more time is that it's 50 feet is permitted with extra scrutiny in this zone. So it's not that it's not permitted, it's just a question of whether you think that that's reasonable and whether we, and really, you have to apply that reasonableness to whether we've satisfied these criteria. And so I think it does satisfy the criteria. I think it's a good addition to this particular location and neighborhood. I don't think also, particularly on the lot, that I don't think the side setbacks actually impact this very much in any way. And it doesn't, there's no way to use this lot outside of staying in the, but I think that's really, it would be utterly unbuildable if it wasn't located where and how it is now. And that's likely why it's where it is a few years ago. So that's all I have for special exception. Questions about that, or should we flip into variance? Or do you want to just stay on special, either way?
Why don't you, do you want them to go through the presentations and then?
We have to do them separately, but it might be, just get everything together so we have the whole picture.
I think that makes sense. Yeah, great. Okay, so variance totally, so five criteria, totally different. Okay, so variance totally, so five criteria, totally different, um, and a different standard of view. So we're asking for a variance, so the special exception is for specifically height. Variance is to allow building, or basically having these non-conforming setbacks, and it's to allow the applicant to build in the same footprint that the building is currently in. To raise this building regardless of the height, has no bearing on the height, any applicant would need to come back with this particular variance to put a new building on this lot in this location. And the really, the big point with the variance also is that this lot could not be used in any way if you applied the side setbacks as they're currently drafted in 2025. And this is a lot of record, so, um, I think that's important to remember going through the criteria. And just quickly, um, whether this is in the public interest? I do believe that it is in interest to develop property in this zone that fits the timbre of the zone. And, and here, a micro hotel is a very appropriate use that's permitted in the underlying zone. Whether it's the philosophy of the ordinance, so again, referencing the preamble, health, safety, general welfare, um, I think upgrading this property is in the public's interest. And I do think that by having a good site plan, it'll create a safer environment there. And so I do think it follows exactly the preamble of the ordinance. And spirit of the ordinance and substantial justices are taken usually together, but substantial justice is usually, you know, whether it would be just to allow the applicant to do this or whether it would be unjust essentially if, or to have this kind of burden put onto the public. And this allows the applicant to use the property in, I think, the best way, given how narrow it is and the constraints that it currently has. Property values, it's the same analysis that I was going through for special exception, where improving the property generally will improve the value of the property. If not, it will at least stay the same. And it usually, almost ninety-nine percent of the time, brings up the property's value, which then brings up the properties of all comparable properties in the surrounding area. Adjusting the hardship criteria, um, that quickly is to, we need to look at whether applying the regulation to ordinance is unnecessary or creates an unnecessary hardship for the particular property, given its unique circumstances. It's not that the property is creating hardship, it's that the ordinance is creating hardship for this property. Here, the ordinance mandates certain dimensions for side setbacks that will, that no building or structure other than maybe a shed could comply with. So by applying those side setbacks here, it would be totally, it's totally necessary to do that. It would render this property unbuildable, likely to be at takings. Conversely, what we're proposing here is very reasonable. The applicant wants to raise the older building that's, um, not aesthetically the best building on the strip, I'll say, and put in a new state-of-the-art facility that I think aesthetically, after it goes to planning especially, will look really good on the property, and it mimics the uses that are there, so it's highly reasonable to allow this. And then as far as how unique this property is, back to the original slide for the tax map, and even to the expanded tax map, um, it's incredibly narrow, and there's no other property near it that is as narrow as this, so it's highly unique in that regard. And I believe that's why it's built as it is. So that was just the quickest I could go through those. I'm sorry to answer your question.
Could you scroll through the Google Street View?
Yeah.
Close to, seen that one, but to get a sense of the.
So there's the manor, uh, to the right there. So big long driveway, and then this is looking at the bank prob margaritas. Again, just kind of a big long driveway. So there's no question in my mind from DOT that there's plenty of all season, there's all season safe site distance there for miles, essentially, although that's not really an issue for tonight, but.
Yeah, again, I think, you know, I think it makes, you know, I, I think redevelopment makes sense. Again, my biggest concern and what I'm trying to work my way through is just, I do think it's gonna be the tallest, I mean, it might be in line with the McLean Manor, it's gonna be, but it, I think it's definitely gonna be the, the tallest building in that area. It is, it is a lot of one to two story buildings there, although there are other taller buildings and, and most of the newer buildings in the area are, are taller as well.
And that's, that's specific spot, you can't see the taller buildings. I think the Exeter Plaza with, with the pizzas, that back part of it is two stories, but it's like a big two stories.
Yeah.
And it's kind of down the hill, so that has some bulk to it.
Yeah.
And it's also set back from the street like the hotel would be.
Yeah, if you could go back to the, to the straight on view. Yeah, and I'm just looking, I mean, so it'd definitely be taller, it's gonna be an increase up from margaritas and taller than the bank building and probably roughly in line with the McLean, although it is.
And it, it is hard because the laundromat is not a standard building.
No.
It has large ceilings, like it is tall.
Yeah.
Ceilings up above, so that is a taller than normal one story, but, but again, like to grant the fifty foot special exemption without, with knowing that it's a proposed three story building, but the architecture drawings show the penthouse, which I'm not sure if qualifies.
That's included in the.
That's included in the three stories.
They said that's forty-eight feet with that thing on top.
To the, to the top.
To the top of it. So, so is it a four story building or a three story building?
Well, I think we've been asked to approve a three story. Well, I guess we should ask that question. We've been asked to approve fifty feet.
I was just gonna say, so we're just asking for the, exactly, we're asking for the maximum permitted with the special exception, knowing that it's very likely that the architect and someone engineer are gonna probably manipulate this quite a bit at the planning phase.
Okay. Yes, although I don't know the planning is gonna dig into, there'll be landscaping, but the planning is not a architectural review.
No.
So, um, which is why it'd be nice, I mean, I, I think it just makes a lot of sense, it just, this is why it's tough, because it'd be, and I completely understand why you didn't submit the architectural running, because there's so much that could change from this point, um, but it's nice to know what we're dealing with and especially if there's gonna be any, you know, modulation in, um, at the higher, you know, at the.
It looks like the, the, or did you call the atrium level, the top there?
Yeah.
Is that, and that looks like it's set back a little bit.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, you know, work on the architectural detail, you know, the attractiveness of the building.
Yeah, it's not just you, we like it when other people come in and here's how the building's looking now, and here's kind of superimposed what we're kind of thinking of, what it might be. We know it'll change, but just giving us the bulk next to what's existing is a huge help for us. We understand it's not part of our purview, but it helps us determine if that fifty feet.
Even just seeing, without any of the design, seeing where the apartment building ends, where this, the height of this building would, would end, and then where bank prob would, you know, the top of bank prob would be, would really be helpful, just to see how that.
Would that be something, if we were to continue to next month, if that's okay with you Jeff, and we could superimpose?
I mean, that'd be huge, huge help.
I actually have kind of a regulatory question that I want to bring up, because I was reading through section five dot four, which are the height regulations of the general regulations, and actually five dot four dot two is the special exceptions for height regulations. And everything in there is around, um, towers, chimneys, elevators, spires, and that, like nothing, there can be, like in the tower, there can be no place of habitation. So I, I'm questioning whether this is a special exception or is this actually a variance? Because it doesn't seem like it meets the criteria for a special exception.
I think special exception note twelve is what they're saying.
I know, well, if you read note twelve, all note twelve says.
Fifty feet is permitted, permitted by special exception.
By special exception, and then you read.
But the special exceptions aren't.
But the special, right, the special exceptions are towers, steeples, um, so if you read through five dot four dot two, it does, I don't, I don't think that this is actually a special exception, I think this is a request for a variance.
I think the fires and stuff like that are exempt.
Yeah, I think that's trying, it's just trying to say, your chimney does not have to be the cap of your whole thirty-five feet for your house. They're saying that like, you're allowed to have small structures that go above.
Special exception to height regulations.
Like if you had a cap roof, we got an elevator, and that elevator's room or shaft went up an additional six feet, but it was only occupying like four feet of the actual roof?
Works the same way as, as say a soffit on a house or.
The way we have interpreted it in the past is that if there's going to be living space up there like this, then the special exception would apply. If they're going, going, if they're going to put something like a, um, elevator house that the shaft goes up beyond fifty feet, it's basically exempt.
Okay, that's not how I read, but that's not how this reads.
That's how we've interpreted it.
Okay, all right, so I'm.
That's why.
Are you in, what page are you on?
I'm on page five dash nine. It's a section five dot four dot two, special exception to height regulations.
Yeah, I mean, it's sort of, I totally get what you're saying. I think, and the way I read this too, is that this doesn't actually, it says special exception, I think that probably isn't the best language, because it really is, it's not a special exception.
Yeah.
It, it seems to be just an exception to the.
To having.
Yeah, because this is not special exception language, like you would typically see in an ordinance and like we have elsewhere, this is, these look like they're actually just permitted, as long as you meet.
They're exceptions.
These, yeah.
Exceptions.
The special exception is not a special exception.
No, I'm reading these literally.
No, I mean, it makes sense, yeah.
That's a poor title.
Two ever pass that.
The building's height in the zone is thirty-five feet. So if you want to go to fifty with the building, then it's a special exception.
And then this would be if you wanted to go over fifty feet, so you could do towers and things over fifty feet, is that what this is saying?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, if they wanted to do a cupola on top or something like that.
Like a design thing or?
Let's say a chimney going up through the middle of it, you know, it could, it could exceed the fifty feet. But the, the, the special exception is from thirty-five for the building's structure.
Okay.
That's, that's the way we've been interpreting it.
Okay.
From my predecessors as well, so.
Got it.
I, but I, you know, you can read these things, so.
Well, it probably.
Twist it around.
Probably should change that title to.
That language.
Yeah, use special exception only when referring to a special exception, not.
I heard two, yeah, there's a lot of things.
It's a lot of things I could change. You know, the new piece is very literal.
No, it's a good catch. It's a good catch, but I don't think, yeah.
Okay.
Organized to this. But I feel pretty comfortable that there, we're right on track with.
Okay.
A special exception is anything above thirty-five feet.
And I, I think if you can provide, I mean, I think it would just make it, it would make it easier for me, and I think that's why I'm here for some of the others.
Agreed.
Just because again, it does get to, you know, character of the neighborhood and, and, you know, those, those criteria.
I think we can vote on the variance, so to like, do you agree?
If we're gonna, I mean, I think for me, the variance is actually, goes to be the harder one to meet, um, I think it'd be helpful for the variance as well.
Okay.
And vote on, on, you know, both together. And I think, yeah, I think it would be helpful for me on both requests.
You can't vote on one without the other.
Yeah, they go together, they're tied pretty close, I feel too.
And, and I will say, and this is just.
Although the variance, my, my argument for that would be that regardless, it's, it's literally unusable based on applying the side setbacks. So we would just be, the variance is just to build, I mean, I don't understand what it is, but I'm saying, I don't know that the height, they are related, because the project's related, but I do think they are very separate, and that the variance really, there is an actual hardship.
I.
That because of the property's unique width.
I, I think you meet the uniqueness, no question, that's, that's an easy one.
Yeah.
But I don't think it sets, because you're not just asking to go up into the setbacks, you're asking to go up to potentially fifty feet of the setbacks, and I do think that's, that's a difference. There is.
I think I'd rather address that in the special exception though, because I'm worried, I don't want to blend the two and then blend the elements together. That's what, that's what I'm worried about, that by, I totally understand what you're saying, but I, I think that the variance is just asking, can the building be demolished and built back new, even if it was one story in the existing footprint? Because if we blend the criteria.
But it can be, right? I think the difference is you need a variance is because you're going, you're, you're expanding, it's just a vertical expansion, but you're expanding into the setbacks. So I do think it, it applies, because if you wanted to build, tear down and build as is, without any existing, you know, more height, you could do that without anything from us.
Sure.
So, I, in any event, I think that they're pretty, I think they're pretty tied together, and I think it'd be, I think it's just gonna make things go much more smoothly if we have. And I will say, for me personally, I do these, I always put in a little caveat, I know that it's not gonna be exact.
Sure.
But, you know, substantially similar, stuff like that, you need to put, you know, make that note, I, I have no issue, because I know that site conditions, planning, review, that's all gonna change, um, but it is really helpful for us to know what we're, you know, what we're voting on and just have a better sense of where we, you know, I think this is the biggest one, is how does it, how does it really feel?
So we just want to see, we just want to see less design and more of just box.
Yeah, straight on.
How high is fifty feet?
We'll measure, we'll measure McLean Manor and then we can plot that.
Yeah, I mean, I leave it up to you how you present it, but I think that's probably, that would be very helpful.
On the elevations, so you can kind of see it on the elevations of like, this McLean Manor sits here, this, the new building's gonna sit here, so how does that, how did the, how did the height of all those buildings look optically?
I think this might be a good opportunity to have a site plan in front of you showing the parking spaces.
I also, I agree with that, because I understand, again, a little bit out of our purview, but saying the parking spaces at margaritas, that's, that's kind of vague, like there's a bunch of parking spaces at the bank too, are they just gonna fill the bank parking lot, because they don't want to walk into margaritas because it's twenty below?
I'm happy to answer all those questions, I, I just worry about becoming a design review board unless a zoning board, and so that's why I'm trying to stay specific, but we can.
Parking's also a zoning thing, you have to have so much parking for the hotel, the eighteen people plus the employees.
No, I, I understand.
Yeah, I get it. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, just seeing their margaritas, it's these ten spots, okay, happy.
But I think you can get more parking on your own lot. I think you and I talked about that.
And I, I'd well utilize for the parking.
I think, you know, just showing what, eight spaces up here in front of the building, is it eight or?
Seven.
Seven, um, but we know we have off-site parking, but if you can get as much on-site that you have, I mean, we're doing this, Christian Smith?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think you can show meeting the parking.
Sure.
So.
Sean wanted your gesture just a minute.
Yeah, I did, I just had a question about the.
Do you want to come, speakers are way over here, so you either need to yell or knock over.
If you just stand, if you could just stand more or sit more towards the center or whatever you're comfortable with, but just the, under the blue, the mic will pick you up, otherwise they won't hear you on the recording.
Sure, yeah, no problem. Um, yeah, I can stand for a second. We can definitely provide the cross-section if you want to show on the elevation change, but I did have a question, if, if a building this size was built at the same grade as the, the manor next to it, would there be hesitation in granting the variance for the height?
Uh, I think that's, I don't, you know, know without seeing it, but definitely the elevation, the grade change is a factor, no question.
Right, right. I just didn't know if it was the grade that was really the problem and not necessarily the height of the building.
So I think the grade is, you know, I think the grade's probably the, is a big problem, but there's nothing you can do about it. So it's, at the end of the day, one of our, you know, our, we have to determine whether the use is compatible for the special exception, whether, um, you know, it's, you know, there's impacts to the character of the neighborhood, and so that all gets to, are you, you know, is this creating something that's gonna really jut out and, and just not fit in? Um, and so I don't know if I answered your question, but I think that, you know, that, so it's all, it's, you know, without that grade, probably much, definitely. you know, without that grade, probably much, definitely much less of an issue. But it's a, it's a site characteristic we got to deal with.
Right, okay.
Just wanted to ask.
So we have to continue next month and we'll try to submit within a couple of weeks for the, is there a submission deadline prior?
Well, no, you're just continuing the case.
Right, but for any materials to do, is that be your four?
I think 10 days, five days before the meeting.
Yeah, I forget.
We'd like it at least five days before the meeting. If we can do 10, that'd be better.
Yeah, I don't recall what our rules say, but that would be, that'd be helpful, yeah. We haven't been strict on that, I think, but it would be.
So one question, elevation wise, because the manor keeps climbing to the back. So picking that elevation of that building, because it's stepped going up. And then you look at the elevation where the laundromat is, you want to see the direct proportion between the two of those tracks. And that's going to factor into your decision.
Yeah, that's a good point. I think that's, that's fair.
You know.
Yeah.
Could you go back to that picture?
Yeah, because it is, it does make it, it does set back.
I was just going to say, because that, the rear building is at a higher elevation, but yet the heights are the same and they mirror against the front. The front just looks taller because of the drive under.
Right.
So that elevation is probably either equal to the laundromat or even a touch higher if we're looking at pavement to pavement.
And that's great. That would be really helpful.
And that, that's why it's like, you know, so, because this perspective is very deceiving where if you bring it up to actual level elevation, because that's going to make a difference in how we actually prepare that view for you. So you have to actually get up to the grade to actually look at it. From this perspective, looking up, it's, it's a little deceiving.
Everything's going to look taller because you're below it.
Yeah, I mean, I will say that is going to be the view for most people. But I recognize, yeah, if, it probably doesn't make sense to do the front compare, you know, it's not really apples to apples, front of the McLean Manor to the back.
You know, we have Chris to look at it and Sean look at it. We want to have to pick the, that elevation that we're actually, to make it equal.
Can it be done so that it's at the point where you're at the front of where the new building would be, where the hotel would be? So that would be the point where that would be the elevation level that you would choose?
Yeah.
So not from the street, right? You would be.
And, you know, what I, I think you guys are calm and that it's just like this elevation.
Right, straight across.
Yeah, to see what that looks like, so then we can kind of compare.
Exactly.
You know, and then this is actually coming down a little bit. I don't know if these, I had to take a peek at that and see if I should refine some hash.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're trying to get a sense of the relative heights between the two, so.
And what it's going to look like next to bank prob as well.
Yeah, 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 not just McLean Manor.
Yeah, it's much.
So, I, I think, yeah.
I think just what it's going to look like in the space. Even just to 50 feet, even if it's just a box.
A box, yeah.
This is, this is the 50 feet, because that's what we're granting the special exception for.
Allowing a lot more bulk.
We're saying you can build 50 feet these, this far away from your property lines in this space. Not like saying, well, I don't like the roof on this one or I don't like this, like, that's not what we're granting. We're just granting you can build here and here. But part of it is, is it going to change everything around it? Is it going to stand out like a sore thumb because we gave you, you know, the 15 extra feet? But that 15 extra feet is actually 10 feet higher than your neighbor. So really you're now 25 feet above any other building in the area.
Right.
Does that, that make sense?
Yeah. Do we have any relationship with regards to the other hotels, buildings where you'd locate and you decide those hotels? So we have something that we can compare?
We could, yeah, we could.
The hotel next to Dunkin' Donuts, they got special exception because they went to 50 feet. The other hotel.
From area, Fairfield?
I don't even know which is which.
Hampton Inn is next to Dunkin' Donuts, Fairfield is down next to the Volvo dealer.
Yeah. Geez, I don't know. And I don't know if they came in for 50 feet. I don't even know if they're 50 feet. They're probably close to it.
Yeah.
But they're up against a residential zone.
Yeah, with that.
It's a different beast.
Yeah, although that's a, with the hill there. But yeah, and, and feel free, I mean, anything else, I, I don't think we're limiting the submissions. It's open, so if there's, if there's other new photos you want to submit of the, you know, that you think is helpful, that's great. Feel free to do that, obviously, whatever you want to do for your presentation.
Sure.
So we would need to make sure to continue.
Somebody like to make a motion? I don't think I can.
Sure. I may move to continue. The application of VA COLI associates for variance for Article 5, Section 5.1, Point 1, Point 2, and Article 4, Section 4.4, and a special exception per Article, an application for special exception per Article 4, Section 4.4, Schedule 3, to the, what is it, the March 18th. So the March 18th meeting.
Second.
Yeah, at Town Hall. I don't know what room we'll be in. We'll be at Town Hall.
Hopefully it's Nova.
You have a second?
I got a second.
How's everybody vote?
Aye.
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 We will continue this till March. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I think that would really help.
Okay, we're right away. There are August minutes that we need to approve and we can't because we have three of us in this room. Does anybody remember August?
I do. I do remember that meeting.
That goes on.
Yeah, actually.
So focus, focus.
Thirty days.
Focus. Meeting's not over yet.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting, the minutes from August 20th.
I'll second, all in favor.
Aye.
Minutes for August 20th approved.
I hate to do this, but do you want to wait on the?
We can't do the next one because it's not on our agenda.
So yesterday I agree.
Okay, so anybody have another motion they want to put out there?
Your turn.
Second, all in favor.
I'm going to switch on the mic.
We need your.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on Channel 8 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.